Good afternoon. My name is Leslie Bennett. I am an advocate for rare disease patients and I'm the Connecticut rare disease advocate on the task for on the rare disease advisory council. Today I will be chairing the meeting. I am the vice chair of the meeting and we're going to go around and introduce members of the R D A C. Sebra.
Hi, my name is Saurav Vedya. I'm a member of rare disease advisory council and my son, my younger son has hemophilia A.
Hi, I'm Mary Caruso. I am the mom of two adult children that have a rare disease and I'm also a member of the R D A C council.
Okay, James? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you could introduce yourselves, that would be wonderful. James, you want to start off?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. James Lawlings, I'm a member of the R D A C council. I represent sickle cell disease in Exeter, Connecticut, roughly 1,200 individuals living with sickle cell disease and 71,000 with sickle cell treat. Thank you.
Adrian?
Hi, I'm Adrian Manning. I'm the division director for the newborn screening program for the state of Connecticut, Department of Public Health, and I am the commissioner of the Department of Public Health designee for the R D A C. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Craig Miller. I'm the director of immunology and respiratory disease research at Boringer Ingelheim Pharmaceuticals. I'm an R D A C member representing the biopharmaceutical industry as a research scientist focused on rare diseases.
Hi, everyone. I'm Emily Germaine Lee. I'm a physician scientist at UConn and Connecticut Children's. I'm on the R D A C as a physician representative and I've spent my whole career treating children with rare disease.
Thank you. It's good to see all of you. Okay. Kevin, are you online? Okay, we'll get back to him later. All right. I'm going to move on. The purpose of this portion of our meeting is to gather testimony from members of the public about issues that are relevant to the rare disease community and to hear their stories. With that being said, I'm going to have Senator Anwar open for us.
Thank you so much, Leslie. Thank you for all the R D A C members and the people who have joined us. I'm Senator Saoud Anwar. I represent the 3rd Senate District at the towns of East Hartford, South Windsor, Ellington, and East Windsor, and I'm the co-chair of the Public Health Committee. And I'm very fortunate that I was the legislator who was able to join my other fellow legislators to make R D A C permanent and we became the 23rd state in the United States to have a permanent R D A C community. This is very important work, the conversation that we are having. If we do not have a collective voice, many of the times the diseases become orphaned diseases. As a result, we are not able to invest as a society into identifying solutions. This mechanism works. There are plenty of rare diseases that we have been able to identify better ways of diagnosing them in a timely fashion, address their challenges, and then also create treatments. Cystic fibrosis is one disease, pulmonary arterial hypertension is another. We are gaining ground every single day in many of these diseases. As a lung doctor and intensive care unit doctor, I see things at times early or not so early. And that's why seeing some of the rare diseases tells me that this is worthy to have a conversation and also create a forum where the existing path that has been created for previous illnesses, diseases, we have a mechanism to create that same path and then and move on the same highways that have been created. They may not be all be the same, but at least the main highways will be the same and you can branch out. And the science is there, the technology is improving. We have an opportunity to try and raise those awareness and this forum is the real place for for this. So I'm honored to be part of it and witness to the good work that all the advocates do every single day. You are inspiring individuals and the individuals who are experiencing the illnesses, you are the real inspiration. You are the heroes and then we are there for you. We are your cheerleaders. We are part of your family, your extended family. And consider me as one of the legislators, but I know many of my fellow legislators are part of your extended family and we will try to see what we can do to raise your voices to the next level. So thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you for being such a great advocate. We appreciate it. Okay. I'm going to have the next speaker will be Meg. Meg Whitbeck?
Hi, everyone. My name is Meg Whitbeck. I'm a mom of a young boy who is almost 10 now with Gauze disease. Gauze disease, I'm sure many of you know about. Dr. Emily, you evaluated him many moons ago as a toddler and hi. And yeah, his bone health has been amazing and your input was so valuable at that time. So thank you. So I wanted to speak a little bit today about, you know, educational needs for school age students with, living with rare disease. So in terms of what we've learned as a family, when, when someone has a rare disorder, even if they are cognitively right on track, education is impaired. So some examples of that are missed instructional time. So for example, this past school year, we started keeping a tally. And with Luke's weekly treatments and needing to be done in the morning due to side effects, he missed 20% of his math and writing lessons. And so there's that missed instructional time that we decided to really act on and get him some homebound tutoring this year because he was falling behind. Also missed specials and enrichment, you know, children's education isn't just about learning how to read and write and do math. It's the whole person. And at the elementary level especially, the specials like art and music and media and P E all help develop that well-rounded human being and also help them to tolerate, actually after gym classes when they do math. And the, the teacher says, you know, after gym, everyone does so much better in math. So we know that whole person education happens with these specials. And so, you know, Luke is intelligent and capable of learning. When he did his whole evaluation for special education needs, he tested in the above average range in everything because he's not cognitively impaired. But because of his condition and the time away from education and instruction time, he was falling behind. And so one thing that, you know, would be really helpful, you know, from the standpoint of a mom who's working so hard to make sure her kids' needs are met, is that educational support. Because we live in a town with a great school district, we live in Ridgefield, Connecticut, I was able to get him an I E P underneath the other health impairment qualification. And we really had to customize what would work to get Luke back on track and get him, you know, at least back to on track instead of falling behind in reading and math. So a lot of families don't realize that they can call a P P T meeting or request a 504 under a medical disability for their child living with a rare disorder. And without that education and awareness in the school districts, parents aren't going to know. So I feel like legislation to the school nurses saying, hey, if you have a student with a rare disease in your population, in your schools, make sure you reach out to that family and make sure you pay close attention to that child's progress and education. And also knowing the social and emotional impact of living with a rare disease in your child's life. Because, you know, there's a lot going on with school dynamics, friendships, being embarrassed, bullying. And, you know, we've seen our son struggle a lot with the social aspect of living with a rare disease and not wanting to share his story because he's afraid of how he's treated. And that impacts education because then he had school avoidance too. He didn't want to go to school. So from the, just from the perspective of this committee in particular, being really in touch with the public school district about how to service individuals and families with school age students with rare disorders so that they have access to their education and they stay on track. And that families are aware of the services that are available to them through the public school district, whether it be a 504 or an I E P. So that's what I wanted to mention today.
Oh, that's great. We appreciate that information. Any questions? Thanks an awful lot. We'll be in touch.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I do want to just make a shout out because you've been just phenomenal in all you did starting way back when I first saw Luke and I, I knew that you were going to really do great things. Thanks, Meg.
Thank you for saying that. Yeah, it was, you know, he's a double rare kid. He's got two rare disorders and so it's, but you know what? Here's the other thing is that I'm a master's educated mom living in a safe town with access to resources and access to healthcare and it has still been exceedingly hard. So I can only imagine what other families and individuals are up against.
Ridgefield has helped you pretty good then. They've been going to work with you.
Ridgefield public schools have been amazing, but I did have to be the squeaky wheel. Yeah.
Thank you. Moving on, our next speaker is David Leeds. You can sit where you are and go up to whatever's best for you. Can you just announce your name and your disorder first?
Yeah, so good afternoon. My name is David Leeds and I'm a rare disease patient from Avon, Connecticut. I have hereditary angioedema, H A E, with normal C1 inhibitor due to the heparin sulfate glucosamine 3-0 sulphur transferase 6, also known as H S 3 S T 6 gene. It is the rarest form of a very rare and potentially fatal disease. Today I would like to address one of the burdens of living with a rare disease, the ability to access FDA-approved treatments. H A E is in the minority of rare diseases as there are several FDA-approved treatments available to help manage and treat its symptoms. Medicines are available as both prophylactic treatments, those intended to prevent the symptoms, and rescue medications, those intended to treat the symptoms when they occur. Research and FDA approvals for these medications only make them available, but not necessarily accessible by the patient population. One of the hurdles in accessing medication is the prior authorization process. This is dictated by pharmacy benefit managers, the P P Ms, and insurers. The prior authorization process is enacted in a manner that makes it burdensome for rare disease patients. And in my experience, much of the burden is imposed due to the high cost of the medications. So I want to throw out a couple of numbers from my own medications just to give you an idea of cost. I take two FDA-approved treatments for managing my aging. I take a prophylactic and a rescue medication and they are very, very expensive. My prophylactic medicine costs $65,875 for a one-month supply of two doses. My copay is $15,200 of that amount. My rescue medication comes at a cost of $14,838 for a single dose. I can use 10 to 12 in a month. So from my perspective as a rare disease patient, the prior authorization process is a tool that's used to control insurers' costs rather than ensure the patients receive the best treatment for their conditions. Each of my medications requires a separate prior authorization, which must be renewed every six months. The initial request is rejected every time and must go through several levels of appeal, usually culminating in a peer-to-peer between the insurer and my doctor. Several weeks can pass between the submission and approval. And yet the approval for the next six-month period is always retroactive to the submission date, which makes the approved period shorter than six months. As I mentioned, my experience has shown that this approach is meant to control costs rather than to benefit the health and well-being of the patient. So I take another medication for a different condition. That medication is not for a life-threatening or potentially debilitating disease. The prior authorization for that medication was approved for a three-year period. The total cost for a 30-day supply of that medicine was $91. So in conclusion, my ask for the R D A C is to help shape policies to help patients be able to access the rare disease medications. The prior authorization process needs to defer to rare disease specialists when making medical necessity decisions and allow for approval without multiple levels of appeal. And finally, Connecticut needs to ensure that the prior authorization process is administered with parity for all treatments, common and rare, regardless of the cost of the medication. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you so much, David, for your comments. The state of Connecticut has very limited control over the insurance part, but, but some of the insurance companies, we do have some influence over. In this last session, we had to fight quite a bit to be able to pass a law which basically states that if somebody's going to deny a treatment to an individual, they should be of the same level of training as the person who's prescribing it. And because we had seen a pattern where if somebody had a cancer or any other disease, you would have a person who's a retired surgeon. And, and you would have cancer treatments that are being denied to patients where the person on the other side who's denying is not a cancer specialist of the same level. So we tried to do that and we were fortunate to be able to do it, but it was a big fight. Because we are told every time that we are quote-unquote insurance capital and, and I don't know what that means when, when the patients are not going to get the care that they need. So we've at least been able to chip away some of the challenges associated with it, except our influence as a state by law is on a very limited number of insurance companies, but we hear you. Some of these are federal issues that we actually need to keep fighting and then bring them to the next level. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Pam Johnson.
Sort of a good segue to some of the federal issues I'm going to talk about. So my name's Pamela Johnson. I'm from Ellington and like David, my son, who's 12, and I both have hereditary angioedema. This condition causes severe swellings all over the body, including the face and the throat. And without treatment, one in three people with this condition will die if they don't have access to medication. So maintaining that access is essential. David mentioned we do have medications and they are not cheap. I also am on two medications that cost roughly $60,000 a month. My son's medication runs about $40,000 a month. Our combined copays can be excess of $1,500 a month. I rely on copay assistance to help off-pay, offset these costs. And the two of us are enrolled in four copay assistance that provide roughly $12,000 of assistance annually. I have a good job. Like one of the previous speakers, she mentioned she's master's level educated. You know, I am too. I have a career. I'm a busy mom. I make a good salary. But this is too much of a financial burden. I am dependent on the assistance I receive. And when I don't have access to the assistance, I am forced to go without my medication. When that has happened in the past, I've had swellings that are so bad, they caused me to be intubated and require use of a ventilator. And this has happened on multiple occasions. One swelling caused major damage that required two surgeries to fix. This is a dangerous condition and we should not be without our medication. My goal today is to share concerns with the committee about the burden of copay accumulators and copay maximizers on rare disease patients. First of all, let's talk about what are copay accumulators and copay maximizers. A copay accumulator is a strategy used by insurers and pharmacy benefit managers to stop copay assistance from counting toward two things, your out-of-pocket maximum and your deductible. Drug manufacturers have attempted to create programs to subsidize the out-of-pocket costs for patients. But the payers or insurers reduce the values of these programs by exhausting the funds, which also requires the patients to pay down their deductibles and coinsurance out-of-pocket to obtain their medications. And I've been told I wouldn't receive my medication unless I paid an $8,000 out-of-pocket max. I don't have that. The only real benefactors of the copay accumulator model are the payers. And as a result, patients who are the customers suffer financially. And David mentioned it's, it's like double dipping. Copay maximizer is different. It sets an individual's cost-sharing amount to be the maximum value of the manufacturer's assistance. And this is often front-loaded at the beginning of the year. It can include an accumulator component so that the money doesn't count toward the patient's out-of-pocket max or their deductible. And this allows the insurance company to get the most money out of the manufacturer while keeping the patient's costs down. But if the copay assistance is exhausted, this means less people are able to be covered. Now, the state of Connecticut is one of 19 states that has passed legislation to ban copay accumulators. So thank you, Connecticut. So thank you very much. The Help Copays Act went to the House of Representatives in 2021, but it did not pass to become part of federal law, unfortunately. Currently, the allowance of these programs falls to the state. So even though we have legislation in place, it doesn't, it doesn't help those under the private insurance plans that fall under ERISA. So state mandates do not apply to those covered by self-funded plans because ERISA is a federal law. So let me tell you what my experience with that has been. Last year I had copay assistance, but I received notification in February that my copay assistance was going to run out in April. Why? The copay accumulator, accumulators and maximizers drained the copay assistance available to everyone, even those who had state protections in place. So many people on these programs ran out of money for a period of time, which is a crisis in the rare disease community. The Help Copays Act has been reintroduced to the House and the Senate. And my son and I are both going to Washington DC in July to lobby for this to become federal law. I don't want my son to suffer multiple rounds of intubations, broken teeth, and needless surgery that I went through. I want to make sure we will retain access to our medications. If I cannot afford them, I cannot access them. I want the committee to be aware of what copay accumulate, accumulators and copay maximizers are and that these programs do not help rare disease patients. Instead, they leave us without access to care. Thank you.
Thanks, Pam. That's a truly unimportant issue for us and we are aware of it. We watch you evolve and one of the things we do fight for and we thank the legislature for passing the copay accumulator bills here.
It's huge.
And something, Colleen Burnett is one of our advocates who fights for this and enlists the help of Representative Gilchrist frequently on this. So we are aware of it, but it really does hit our community very hard. So thank you for that. Okay.
So to help at the federal level, people in Connecticut can help by reaching out to their federal representatives, correct? To help support you when you go forward on this because that seems to be a very important part of this, correct?
Right. So this is still on. So it's encouraging, like all of our local senators and our local people. I've been in discussion with our federal senators and on the federal level, and we're planning to go in July and we're hoping to be joined by one of our federal senators from Connecticut. But this is, it's hard to know what the R D A C can do, but I hope like getting the information to people like Dr. Senator Anwar to bring to our federal senators, I'm hoping will help move these bills forward. Connecticut has been immensely supportive of rare disease community and the rare disease patients. So I'm grateful I'm here.
We do also interact with our federal senators and representatives. Here we have good relationship with all of them. The other thing we do is we talk to R D A Cs in other states and we can get other states to start mobilizing on these issues.
That's good.
Those are things. We'll stay in touch with us and we'll, we'll start talking about things like that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions before we move on? John, you'd like to speak? You can sit anywhere.
Good afternoon. My name's John Filczak, Brooklyn, Connecticut, and this is an odd spot for me to be in. I've been this building since before, in this building since built and for 40 legislative sessions on public policy. And this is the first time after hundreds of bills that I've testified on and meetings and so forth and meeting with Senator Anwar and crumbling foundations that we've successfully worked on. This is my first time talking about myself. So it's a little bit of an odd position to be in, but I'm grateful to be here and I'm grateful that you are assembled and I learning something new about rare diseases each, each time I'm at a meeting and already today, some of the stories that I've heard. In my case, let me give you just a, a brief background. Roughly two years ago, following a COVID booster shot, I started not feeling well and about a week after that and went to a walk-in clinic up at UConn in stores and they said, oh, it's just a reaction to the shot. You'll be fine. Just take some Tylenol. Go home, rest, you'll be, you'll be okay. Things started to deteriorate more and more and I won't go into all the details, but I ended up back at the ER or to the ER at Wyndham Hospital. And they released me, sent me home. I was back a short time later, about a week later, apparently had a stroke because my body was so stressed out. Was at Wyndham for a few days and then transferred to Brigham and Women's in Boston where most of my primary care is at up there and so is my cardiologist and others. And there's a 32-day process from the beginning of the, when the disease presented itself to when I finally got a diagnosis of M O G, which is, I don't try to pronounce it because I always do it wrong, but it's a, it's a rare neuroimmune disease that is associated with the delamination of myelin covering the nerves. And it presents itself with optic neuritis, which I had and actually went blind in one eye, which was not a great experience. Also transverse myelitis, which affects the spinal cord and causes pain, muscle weakness. I had over most of my body, it felt like I had a, a sunburn without the burn, probably the most intense pain I think I've ever felt. But at this time, while there's a, there is a test for M O G, there's no cure. And the approaches seem to vary depending on what part of the country you're in. And in my case, through Boston, through now Mass General, I receive every four weeks an IVIG infusion, which I'll have my 23rd next, next Wednesday on, on July 3rd. And they're not as expensive as, as yours. But they're not, they're not cheap either. Thankfully, I do have good health insurance and that has not been a real problem to date. Hopefully that will, that will not happen, but it was, it's, it was quite a journey from, you know, the diagnosis to walking out of there, more steroids than I ever wanted, five plasma exchanges. And, but I was able to walk out and I've been doing relatively okay with a lot of medication and so forth. But so I'm very thankful to all the doctors and nurses, et cetera, that, that helped me out on that. And in particular, just a couple of things, I just observations I want to mention. You know, when I got released from Brigham and Women's, it was, we'll assign you a neurologist in a few weeks and you'll go see that person and and we'll work on your treatments. I was not told about the different organizations that support my disease, in particular the M O G project, the Segal Rare Neuroimmune Association or the Samar foundation, which are just a wealth of, of help to a person with my disease. I wish they had on the way out because I was able to find them through Google. But it's, it's sort of overwhelming at first and you're still started not fully, fully aware of your senses and all. But I, a couple of things, you know, we have with those three groups I mentioned, ongoing group sort of group sessions with other people with M O G. And the cost that we discussed And the cost that we discussed earlier and people not being covered, that comes up continuously with folks. Also, folks being afraid to divulge their disease to their employer, which I find astounding. In one case, even the person who was in the public sector, working for another state. As I told her, if it was Connecticut, I think they'd be in jail, their employer. But just afraid of the discrimination that might occur. What's also become very apparent to me that our community hospitals are just all the more essential than I thought they were. With the help that they were to provide me at Wyndham. And just the having some framework in place so that those of us that do present with a rare disease or unknown disease to, at an emergency room that, you know, in my case, well, it's not MS, even though it looks like MS. So, it can't be MS. So, they immediately went to something else. In my case, they were pumping me full of antivirals, thinking, well, it's maybe meningitis. And that was the treatments I was being given for several days at a very high rate. And, you know, finally, a doctor came in from Hartford and said, well, if it is what they think you have, you'd probably be dead already. So, it's gotta be something else. And he was, we had a great talk, actually, quite late at night. And, but thankfully, the folks in Boston, this is something they're, they do a lot of research on. I have a neurologist now, Dr. Michael Levy, who's known worldwide in this topic area of neuroimmune diseases, in particular MOG. So, vocation is very fortuitous in this case. But having some kind of depository where folks can get on there and say, here's the symptoms. What might this be? And what might the, some treatment be? In hindsight, just my going, losing my vision in one eye should have just triggered an optic neuritis diagnosis pretty quick, and steroids would have been the course, and that would have probably saved me from perhaps even doing some of the blood plasma transfers. But, which was actually not all that unpleasant, but it did help me out a great deal. And finally, and I know I just had my youngest son, who's now a physician assistant up at Brigham's, which is nice that we can see him when we're up there for treatments on occasion if he's free. But just, I know they did this in a couple of places in New York City not that long ago, where rare diseases became a part of the curriculum for, for those students so that they were exposed to what it is and how it might be addressed. And, and I don't know if Connecticut does this or not yet, but just supporting the clinical trials and the research to give a boost to that. I don't know if that's something we've ever done in this state, but it seems like whatever we can do to get behind that. And we like to tout ourselves as a, as a, as a research center for for the nation and the world, and I think that's something we should, hopefully, we can get behind. And finally, I'll just say, you know, MOG has changed, it's changed my life, obviously, over the last two years. But it's interesting. It's really not in a negative way. It's, in some ways, it's sort of created some intercomness or different perspective for me. So, now I'll be moving on from my current job of the last twenty-nine years, being a director of a council of governments to something else by, on Friday, I'll be retiring from that job. So, I can see myself focusing more and more on this and maybe using my skill sets. If I can assist you guys, I'm more than happy to do that. I'll have some free time. So, thank you very much.
Your help will be welcome. Thank you. If you go to an ER now, do you take a, some sort of form with you to let them know that you have MOG?
Yeah, actually, the MOG project has a has a card, sort of a wallet card, that you just, has your, this is what it is, and some links to information. Your doctor, my neurologist has provided me with not only the office number, but his personal cell and other contacts so that he can be gotten to twenty-four seven. So, you know, it's fortunate now, I mean, those of us with it, we know the symptoms that there's going to be a relapse. Because with MOG, it's, many people are one and done. Others have it continually relapsing, others can have a big gap. In my case, they expected that my, my tide for the MOG would go way down with all the treatments. It does not. It's remained very high, which is sort of an anomaly. I'm involved in a study now because the MOG protein is nearly identical to, or close enough with the milk protein. That, so I've gone on this dairy-free pick, which I think has driven my wife crazy. But nonetheless, it has not impacted so far. Okay, I'll find out next week when we do it, I'll do another blood test. But, yeah, so, you know, you try anything. Because much as I enjoy the infusion, so, you know, would prefer not to go.
Yeah, I can imagine.
Thank you so much for sharing that with us. I wanted to, to try and understand, because majority of the people, when they would come with that symptom, they would, it would look like MS. So, you probably had your spinal tap and the MRI and the whole works. At what point, what information helped them move in this direction since it's so rare? And who was able to make that decision to send you to Boston?
Well, the doctor at Wyndham, Dr. Keenan, Michael Keenan, he was sort of, you know, riding herd on my case from the beginning. And he had some suspicion that it was neurological, wasn't sure what. And it's not uncommon, not from what I know now, that, you know, the symptoms come in that it looks like MS. It's got all the characteristics of MS, but it doesn't test out as MS. So, many conclude it's not MS. Others will start treating as you would someone with MS. Unfortunately, those drugs, those therapies don't work on MOG. And it wasn't until twenty seventeen, when they were able to isolate it as a distinct neuroimmune disease and come up with some ideas as to what the best treatments were to, to address it. And unless you were in a few different places, like the Mayo Clinic or Johns Hopkins or Boston, you probably weren't in a place that was going to be able to isolate it. And even there, it took them several days. At first, they thought I had NMO and another, another neuroimmune disease. And I'm thankful that it wasn't NMO in hindsight, knowing what the outcomes are with that. Although they've made some progress with drugs on that one. But it was just sort of, I was just very lucky that my, my doctors were up there, and I was insisting I wanted to go where my doctors were. Because there was a consulting neurologist that came in through Hartford Healthcare via Zoom. I think she was based in Arizona, and, which was not the greatest setup. I'm laying in pain on a gurney, and the TV is up on the wall as they are in those places. And she's asking me questions. I could barely hear her. And, you know, I guess at some point there, they reached a conclusion, it's probably not neurological. But I don't think Dr. Keenan fully bought into that, and he worked actually with the doctor, who's now my neuroophthalmologist, to get me a bed at Brigham. And waiting for me there was a neurologist at about one o'clock in the morning. We spent two hours going through a whole battery of tests. But, yeah, I did the spinal tap and all of that. But you can see all the, and I showed me the stuff, the lesions on my back and brain, optic nerve. I mean, it's the nice thing or the good thing, I don't know if it's nice, with MOG is that it tends to regenerate the myelin, it tends to come back. And that's something that they're trying to study as to, you know, why does that happen with MOG but not with MS? Not with NMO and these others, that they're trying to see if they could figure that out. Perhaps there's a pathway to helping out the folks that have those, those neuroimmune diseases. So, this is, it's amazing, all the stuff that's going on, go way beyond my pay grade.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
That's quite a journey. How long did it actually take you to get that diagnosis?
Let's see. It was, it was in Boston. It was, what was it, four or five days? And, and I think, you know, and my wife Karen, I mean, I was not in good shape. And without her as my advocate, I'm not sure what would have happened with me, because a lot of what occurred there, I can't recall. I have no recollection, for instance, of them taking me out of the ambulance in Boston and moving me to a room. All I know is the worst ride of my life. Every time they bumped, I was like, my skin was on fire. So, not a lot of fun. But, you know, but we get to go to, get to sit on the, on the mast pike once a month and
I know.
Experience that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions before we move on? Is there anybody online or on the virtual platform who would wish to speak? In that case, Mary, do you want to say two words about what's going on?
So, again, I'm Mary Caruso. I, I have two adult children that have the rare disease, Free Dricataxia. Our journey has been long. They were both six and eight years old when they were diagnosed, and they're now thirty-four and thirty-seven. At diagnosis, I was given a lifespan of probably early teens. So, rule number one, don't always believe what you're told at the time. It's been quite interesting, and I've taken something away from every person that spoke today. I think there are so many issues with rare diseases. Cost is a huge factor, and if it's not the prescriptions, it's the vitamins that, you know, your physicians suggest that you should take depending on your rare disease. Then there's the education piece. We, our family just started going up to UConn about seven years ago with a goal of trying to talk to every health science class that comes through, just to talk a little bit about what it's like to either walk into a room and try to explain your rare disease, and a doctor walking into a room, whether it's an emergency department or any kind of critical visit, because most times physicians don't understand your disease. So, you know, our feeling is talking about partnership and mutual respect and, you know, trying to make it a team effort when you're dealing with people with rare diseases. There are so many rare diseases, yet there are so many common factors involved. And the other issue that was brought up is socially. The first speaker spoke about her son in, in school. I remember over the years, because my children were diagnosed young, and it is a progressive illness, every step of the way, there were problems, and there was misunderstanding and other, their peers either being afraid of them. And I used to tell my kids, well, that's all right, because when you go into high school, it'll be different, and it was the same. And then I said, when you go to college, it'll be different, but it was same. And I, I truly believe that it's really society. And the more we can do just in education and understanding and being out there, stressing the importance of being valued, like everyone has a value, that it will be important in the future for other people coming up with rare diseases, that we're all unique, but we're all the same, and we all feel we have a value. I know right now, you know, we seem to be going through the system, like trying to get services, and again, it's the same thing, trying to get, you know, agencies to understand what life is truly like. And how do we bridge that gap? And how do we teach and make people understand that we have a value, we want to be part of the community? So, I think there's so many facets, and there are some real good goals of the Rare Disease Council, but I don't think we should forget the basics. And irregardless of your rare disease, you know, everyone in the community wants to go to school, wants to have a job, wants to be, give back to the community. I think that's also a really important lesson that we could teach others and hopefully foster some type of partnership throughout our communities.
Hi, so this is my son, Anay Vedya. He is eight years old. He, he has a bleeding disorder called hemophilia A. He was diagnosed in twenty sixteen when he was about to hit his first birthday. So, I would, I would like to talk to him, let him talk and see what he wants to share about his disease.
I have hemophilia A and it's a little different than B. I used to do, put the, put medicine in every two days. But then, after that, we switched to a different medication, and now I only have to do it once a week. And if you have hemophilia, sometimes you have a port, because when you're like really young, your veins aren't going to be that good. So, I, so you have to, so eventually, you might have to take your port out and start using veins only. And it's pretty different. And if, if you don't get the needle into its try, you have to continue trying. Nothing bad is going to happen. And sometimes if you get like it, sometimes if you get like late for putting the medication in, you're probably, you have a bigger chance of getting hurt more. Because when you have hemophilia, you, the part, the factor that clots your body, you don't have that much of it. So, like tiny, teensy tiny cuts, those that are going to heal, but like big stuff, like big scratches and stuff, those might not heal.
Thank you. So, just want to add a few more things. So, when he was diagnosed and the doctor told us that he has a hemophilia, me and my wife both were like, kind of a ten percent knowledge of medical terms. So, we had no idea what is hemophilia is. And I remember when I was in high school, my teacher was telling me something about royal disease, hemophilia, and I was trying to figure out, is it the same thing? So, I Googled it and figured out what this is. Doctor and panel came into our room, and they told about hemophilia, and they said, you need to infuse your son. And I said, okay. And he says, it will be thrice in a week infusion. So, I thought it's like a fever or something, right? I asked them for how many weeks? And he said lifelong. I still remember those words, or I can still listen those words in my ear when he said lifelong, because we had no idea about what it is. After that, we had so many episodes of like Um, after that, we had so many, uh, episodes of like, in his, in his first year, we were in hospital every other month for some or other thing. Just after two months of finding, starting his medication, we found he got, he developed inhibitors. And, uh, he was in hospital for almost fifteen days. He got sixty injections in five days. So there was no place in his body to give, um, infuse more. And that's when, uh, they put first installed port on his body. Uh, the port got infection after a couple of months, so we have to remove it and install it another port. So that, that initially few months was a very difficult journey for us. We, we, we were thinking that in the world, we have, we just have one patient of hemophilia who is my son. But then, um, I was introduced, uh, to Connecticut Hemophilia Society and find out we have a community here. I, uh, so at least we had a lot of support, uh, from, from that community for a long time. And then I was part of that community as a member, vice president, president. And then last year, we merged Connecticut Hemophilia Society to a bigger organization, New England Hemophilia Association. Uh, so with my son, when we were struggling to find out support, the society gave us a lot of emotional support, social support, and we found out a lot of, uh, tricks and those things with other, uh, when we're talking to other parents in the, those events. Uh, that's when we started giving back to society, connecting back to our community and figure out that how, how we can help newly found patients, right? Uh, and when, uh, we found the rare disease council, that's why I wanted to join this council so that we can educate more and more people. One thing I think a couple of speakers was talking about, uh, educating, uh, kids in their early stage, maybe through elementary school or middle school about their, their diseases. I think that is gonna definitely help to, for, for educating people and then they can help other rare disease patient. Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to speak at this point? Thank you.
I do.
Okay.
I just want to say you did a fantastic job. You're amazing. And I had my rare disease since I was pretty young. And I had a port and I had a lot of attacks and I missed a lot of school and I had to go through different ports and different treatments. But you stick with it and you keep having a big voice and you're gonna go really far and you're gonna get to meet all these awesome people. Um, and I'm gonna look up, because there's a book written by a man with hemophilia who became famous and he spoke in DC and I got to hear him speak and I'm gonna try to find that book for you, okay?
Thank you very much for speaking. It was wonderful. Sorry. Thank you very much for speaking. It was absolutely wonderful. It's great to hear from you.
You sure did. You did a good job. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? If not, I think we will move on to the formal part of our meeting. We're about five minutes early, but, uh, better late than never this time. All right. For the formal part of our meeting, I'm gonna ask everybody who is a member of the ARDAC to please reintroduce yourselves. My name is Leslie Bennett. I am the vice chair, currently the vice chair of the ARDAC and I represent the rare disease community. I'm a rare disease patient advocate. Okay, one of the two of you go next.
Hi, I'm Mary Caruso. I'm the mom of two adult children with, uh, rare disease, Friedrichataxia. And I represent patient advocacy.
Hi, my name is Saurav Vedya. I am father of a son with rare disease. I live in South Windsor, Connecticut, and I'm, I represent, uh, pediatric parenting, parenting in Arctic.
And I'm Dorian Long and I work at the Department of Social Services.
Should we go online? Who's next online? Kevin?
I, did you say me?
That's fine. Emily, go right ahead.
Oh, sorry. I couldn't tell what the name was. Hi, um, I'm Emily Germaine Lee, physician scientist at UConn and Connecticut Children's, a Peds Endocrinologist on, um, the ARDAC as a physician representative and have worked on rare disease my entire career.
Greg.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Craig Miller. I'm the Director of Immunology and Respiratory Disease Research at Born Gringelheim Pharmaceuticals. I'm an ARDAC member representing the biopharmaceutical industry as a research scientist focused on rare disease.
James.
Yes, um, my name is James Rawlings. I actually built the sickle cell program, um, Brixton Water at Yale North Haven Hospital about thirty years ago. And I am representing the statewide sickle cell, uh, population. There's about twelve hundred, thirteen hundred individuals with sickle cell disease and about seventy-five thousand with the, the, uh, trait. And our biggest problem is that those trait carriers may produce babies. So we have to figure out how not to, as a matter of fact, how to minimize the number of babies we save as opposed to those who are throwing them in the water.
Thank you. Adrienne?
Hi, I'm Adrienne. I'm the, uh, Division Director for the Newborn Screening Program for the State of Connecticut. Um, and I'm the Commissioner's appointee for the, um, ARDAC.
Dorian, did you?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay. Uh, I just want to make sure I didn't skip you. Uh, Kevin?
Yes. Hi, my name's Kevin Felice. I'm, um, a neurologist, neuromuscular specialist at Ha- Hospital for Special Care and care for a lot of patients with ALS and muscular dystrophy. There are many different rare diseases. I'm also a rare disease patient. I have lymphoma and it, uh, has caused me a lot of difficulties. So I, I've got to see the rare disease, um, um, uh, kind of, um, experience from both sides.
You have. Thank you. Michelle?
I am Michelle Spencer-Manson. Uh, so I co-chair with Leslie at this point. Um, I am a physician representative. I'm a medical geneticist, um, at Yale. I'm also the Associate Chief of Clinical Operations for Genetics. So um, that's my main hat and why I'm here as a physician representative. I am also a parent of a child with, uh, who's medically complex with two rare diseases, actually, one, one much more serious than the other. So I apologize that I couldn't be there in person, but we were doing doctor's appointments. So he followed by a team of eight doctors and trying to get those all in. The summer with college is, um, a little bit exciting. So, um, I'm happy to be here and I, I would like to say, I, I did make it, it was a few minutes late. We were, you know, doctors run late. It's just what it is, but, um, really moved by a lot of the stories that were presented today. And as someone who has been on every side of, um, prior authorizations and, uh, a lot of the issues people were talking about, I can empathize and think these are great issues that people are bringing up. So thank you.
Yeah, that, that's, uh, we're trying to get everybody on board to understand the issues that we're gonna have to address next year. So that's great.
Yep.
Okay. I believe we have a quorum, Melia? Yep. Okay. So we're all set on that. Okay. The purpose of today's meeting, the formal part of our meeting, is to review our bylaws, have a legislative update, discuss new and deferred business. Is there anything else that anybody wants to add to that? If not, we will move on. I hope you all had a chance to review the minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes? Do I have a motion from somebody to approve them?
I've moved that we accept the minutes. Leslie?
Thank you. Second, somebody? Okay, we got seconded. In that, if that's the case, um, unless there's an objection, do we need to take a formal vote or shall we just pass the minutes? If nobody objects, I would vote to just pass the minutes as, as they're done right now. Okay, then we pass the minutes for this, this session. If that's okay with everybody. Moving on, review of the bylaws. Craig, do you wanna take that?
Yeah, sure, Leslie. Um, so thanks and also apologies for my end that I couldn't be there, uh, face to face today. My schedule just wouldn't allow it, but I was really looking forward to it. Um, but, uh, looking forward to, to the next opportunity. Um, so yeah, I hope everybody's had an opportunity to, to review the, the, the draft minutes. Um, and again, uh, credit goes to Leslie for doing the bulk of the, the lion's share of the work to, to get the
a little bit.
The, uh, the, the, the bylaws, um, to- together. And I think at a point now that, um, we can start to move, uh, forward with them. I, I think a few key topics, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page about how we've structured the, 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 the bylaws. There's, there's obviously a lot of sort of pro forma, um, aspects in there, both from the, the bill that created the ARDAC. Uh, and then some aspects which we've lifted over from other, um, committees, just in terms of how our meetings are structured, et cetera. Uh, but I think really key, uh, components to it is first, the proposal for three standing, um, committees, one being an executive committee. Uh, the second being a communication awareness committee and the third being a legislative, um, committee. Of course, this will be supplemented though by ad hoc committees, uh, as needed, as, uh, um, steered by the executive, um, committee. Another key component, I think, of the, the bylaws is the staggered overlap of committee members so that, uh, we serve either two or three years' term. So there's always a blend and an overlap between the committee from, uh, one year to the next. Uh, so this would require, uh, members for, um, at first to serve a three-year component, then we could get to a staggered every two-year, um, rotation. So this would can, would provide us with continuity and, and overlap and all these key, um, committees. So those, I think, are the, the highlights or at least some of the, the critical aspects that we've proposed in the, um, in the bylaws. I'd happy to take any questions or if anybody has any, um, concerns around the, uh, the, the bylaws. Leslie, did I miss anything that you'd like to add?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I think we've got the framework and it's just, I don't know if you received any comments, um,
It's pretty clean.
To
Pretty clean.
Thought they were fine at this point, uh, especially after all the changes that you and I and Colleen made.
Yep.
Clean them up and everything else. Any discussion on them? Any comments? Any objections to them? Does everybody feel that we are at the point where we could possibly vote on them today? How do you feel, Michelle?
Yeah, I think that would be reasonable. I think you guys have put a lot of work into it and, and, and kind of tweaked it nicely. So I, I would be in favor of going forward and voting and getting them settled. I think it's an important part, but if there's anybody else who needs more time, I'm also think that it's important we get it right. So from my standpoint, I, I did review them last night and I felt like we were where we needed to be, but I'm very open-minded. If other people need more time or want to talk about it.
Anybody else? Any comments?
I thought it looked good too. I have one question. Um, I was reached out to, um, at UConn about a separate legislative working group that's working on, um, specifically, uh, the, um, Katie Beckwith, sorry for that noise, the Katie Beckwith and, um, I think also the, um, the, um, the screening, the genetic screening. And is that totally separate from the legislative group within the bylaws?
Uh, I don't think so, because both Katie Beckett and, um, the rapid whole genome sequencing were part of legislation that we, um,
Right. So what, it's confusing to me because the government, um, the, the governmental office at UConn um, said to me, it's a s- separate legislative working group. And I specifically said, this is what the ARDAC's working on. Um.
So, ma- maybe, um, Emily, if I understand your question, so I, I believe, and Leslie, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, there is a, a separate working group on the, um, Katie Beckett waiver program, of which we will have an ARDAC member as a part of that working group, but that is distinct. Um.
So is that what that is, Craig?
So, so the, and, and what we're proposing is, as a standing committee, is this legislative committee, and that's basically the state on top of upcoming legislation so that we all understand what's coming and to sort of mobilize us as a, as a group in terms of this key legislation that we need to be staying on top of. I think it was one of the learnings that we've had, especially I think for us, uh, Emily, myself and, and Michelle, maybe Kevin as well, who are coming this from the medical healthcare side of things or from research, kind of naive a lot in terms of how the legislative process works, staying on top of the new bills that are coming, um, to the legislator that, that we need to be aware of and take action on collectively as the ARDAC. That's the essence, I would say, of the legislative committee that we're proposing as part of the bylaws, to be that corridor, that arm. Now, of which there'll be offshoots, I think, for example, in the Katie Beckett waiver program where we need to have ARDAC representation there, this committee could help to coordinate, you know, sort of this, and then pulling all these legislative topics back in, briefing both the executive committee plus the membership. That's the, that's idea of the, of that committee. Um, let me, is that, is that accurate from your perspective?
I, I think what your friends at UConn are referring to is the change in the law. Initially, the law that, um, I asked the Cuban Services Committee to introduce was only for rapid whole genome sequencing for critically ill babies, basically, or critically ill infants. And, um, that looked, that was gonna pass. Uh, we had support on both sides. The problem we were running into is there was also legislation asking for, uh, a reduction in the Katie Beckett waiver program and that was not gonna happen because it affected the budget. So what happened was that issue and the issue of diapers, I believe it was, um, for certain critically ill children.
Yes, that was on there too.
Yes.
They sent email me.
They were both rolled into the original bill. Now, what happened is since we can't have, uh, legislation to right now address the Katie Beckett waiver program, what they did is they created a work group. And, um, I've been working with, uh, several of us have been working with, and that's one of the emails I think I sent you, um, was asking for anybody who's on the Katie Beckett waiver waitlist right now. Representative Gilchrist was collecting those names. She was gonna contact them and see if they could join the, the Katie Beckett, uh, work group. One of the members here from our, our DAC will also be part of that. Um, I will, I have volunteered, uh, to do it because I do have quite a bit of experience with waivers, especially for children, um, in the state and have worked on some of them. But if someone else wants to step in and do it, that's fine too. But one of our members will be on that, uh, committee and uh, that's supposed to start meeting in July, I believe. And what they will do is they will be working on legislation for the next, uh, session in twenty twenty-five on ways to reduce the Katie Beckett waiver. And I'm not sure about what's happening with diapers. I, I don't know. If you know, Dorian, no.
I know that there was some language regarding
Yeah. I think it was, yeah. Right. I know, it was, it was.
Yeah, I think we need to
I, I think we do too, and, and that's something that we can address. I was going to address some of these issues later on when we hit the legislative update session, but we're already addressing it that. But that's not really part of our bylaws. That's something that's separate from that. So
Okay, thanks.
And when, I think they're gonna be having a, um, a meeting at UConn on July eleventh to, uh, talk about rapid whole genome sequencing. Um, and to announce that's happening at the state, we'll be doing that. So, um, if anybody wants to attend, just let me know and, uh, I'm sure that can be arranged. Okay. Is there any other questions about the bylaws or anything that's focusing on the bylaws? Any changes anybody would like to see? Any objections anybody has to them? Any changes?
I would like to understand, um, what's the process for someone being on the executive committee? It says, it says here that they may self-nominate, yet there is other things here relative to patient representatives as co-chairs. I'm just a little confused with that piece of it. The other pieces are quite clear, but that one is kind of a conundrum.
Okay. I, I think the way we were trying to phrase it that is that one co-chair would be one of the patient representatives on the ARDAC. There's five of us. And one co-chair would be from the healthcare industry. There's five of, of, uh, those, uh, representatives as well. And then the executive committee was gonna be set up the same way, one representative from the patient community, one from the, the healthcare community. So that we get a balance. That's what we're looking for with all of this, is to try and have a balance and have the voices balanced. And then the one uh, person on the executive committee who's different will be the representative from the Department of Public Health. So that we do, it's, there's five on that executive committee. And the, the executive committee will basically design the strategy for issues that we will be addressing throughout the year. They will set up the agenda, um, throughout the year. They'll invite the speakers to our meetings. You know, look at issues that we need to educate ourselves on, all of those things. So anybody can, you know, apply to be part of the executive committee. That's great. We would love to have you. Um, and I assume that we will probably be voting on the executive committee at our next meeting is what I would think. I, I don't know. Uh, and that's something we should talk about right now. Um, Michelle, what do you think?
Well, we have to pass the bylaws first. So if the bylaws pass today, then I think if we're gonna have a quorum at the next meeting, I think that's something else we wanted to talk about. I think, I, I think we, we've, we've collected a lot of input and data. I think it's important we start collating that into a strategy for moving forward, right? So we don't get bogged down with not accomplishing things and starting to tier what things we want to accomplish first, second and third, right? So, so we start to have some structure. Um, so if we can pass them today, I think we should. I guess the only question I have, and, and I know I'm I guess the only question I have, and and I know I'm jumping, I'm jumping the gun on the agenda here, is are people going to be available for the July meeting? Just because summer tends to be difficult, a lot of people travel. So I think that was really my my would be my question of when we we pull that trigger.
I, yeah, well, why don't we wait a little bit? Because then we can start talking about the July and August meetings, because those are the two that are going to be questionable.
Yeah, if we can pass it, that would be the past. I think we have to we have to pass the the bylaws.
Yeah, so why? I'm waiting for somebody to make a motion right now to pass the bylaws as they stand.
My question was not answered. Is it going to be the executive committee of a preordained based on their positions? Or is it five, the minimum or is the maximum? I'm just a little confused with that.
Yeah, I I think the proposal is for a standing five-member executive committee, which is composed of the two co-chairs. They have a DPH representative plus two at-large members that would be voted upon. One from the healthcare sector, if you will, this is sort of codified earlier up in the the bylaws from the healthcare sector. And one from the patient advocates should be two voted by the full R DAC members into those positions. Does that make sense?
Well, I'm trying to figure out how this one, how do I define myself relative to? Am I eligible or not eligible based on these these pre-remnants? I'm just confused.
Yeah, absolutely. So Jim, I think you you fall into the the patient advocate group, and that's just sort of based upon the initial appointments. So you can self-nominate yourself or another R DAC member can nominate you and then then run for that position. And then there would be a vote for it.
Yeah, I was just kind of by definition, understanding where I was.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. One of the things we wanted to clarify for everybody is as well, like this is the straight language we took from the bill. But yeah, it's a little confusing about where everybody kind of sits, and it's not necessarily clear in all of our appointment letters. What's the duration of our term that we were appointed for? And just to be sure which category we we fall into, yeah, yeah.
So it's dynamic, okay.
Uh, I think we just need a bit of housekeeping to to uh, for everybody to be sure about their terms and the and and the grouping.
But I think as far as, because I think, you know, I'm in the same boat, right? So I I am, I my reason to be here as I was nominated as a physician or a healthcare advocate. But I technically fall into both, right? Like, so I can fall, I I definitely know the have the patient side as well. But I think it's what you're, I think it should fall into what you are, whatever your official title is on the committee to where you fall into that.
Exactly.
All right, thank you. For stirring the mud.
It's a good question. It's a good question.
Is is there anything else that needs to be clarified about the bylaws? Any other questions, comments, concerns before we we vote on them? And or does anybody need any more time to review them?
Okay, then.
So how about Leslie and Michelle, I can make a motion that we
I I just wanted to give everybody a quick minute here. I must feel like we need Jeopardy music to catch up. If I was like, if I had the least bit of technical ability, I would put the Jeopardy music on, but but I but I don't, and I'm sure I would end up putting something else on. It would take me so long with the time to be over. So I think we just give everybody like at least 30 seconds to give them a chance to speak up. And at the end of 30 seconds, it's very weird when you sit here in silence, right? That's why we need Jeopardy music.
So Jim, are you comfortable with what we've discussed about the executive committee?
Yes, I am. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Maybe just go around and just make sure, make sure everybody is ready to is is happy. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna start because I've been talking nonstop to fill in the awkward silence. I am, I am ready to vote.
So am I.
So am I.
I'm good to vote.
I am.
I'm good to vote.
Dorian? Oh, you'll abstain. That's fine. I understand that. Okay, anybody with any objections, any problems, anything that we have not addressed? In that case, I'm ready to entertain a motion to vote on the bylaws.
I will give that motion.
Thank you.
I second it.
Okay, I have a second. Okay. What? Yeah. Yeah, we will do a roll vote. That's what I was going to suggest. We'll do a roll vote. I'll start off. Yes, I approve the bylaws. Go ahead.
Uh, yes, I approve.
Mary Caruso approves.
Michelle?
I, oh, yeah, I'm off. Yeah, Michelle Spencer-Manson, I approve.
Emily Germainly, I approve.
Joanna Gal, I approve.
Oh, Joanna, good. I'm glad you're here.
Craig Miller, I approve.
Kevin, are you present?
Kevin, Kevin Felice, I approve.
I miss anybody? Do any of the members of Jim, Adrian, or Dorian, do you want to vote?
I approve. Adrian Manning, I approve.
Thank you.
Jim Lawling, I approve.
Okay, thank you. Jim Carson?
I I was waiting for the other agencies to to weigh in if they could possibly go first.
I think Dorian's going to abstain.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna abstain then.
That's fine. That's fine. I understand that that works out well. So with that, I believe the bylaws have passed. And at the next meeting, when we talk about that a little bit later on, at the next meeting, we will probably be voting on an executive committee. So think about whether you want to be part of that or not. There are four members of the patient group that are eligible. And there are four members of the the healthcare group that are eligible. So that's where we are at this point. Any other, any other part anybody want to discuss any further, or shall we move on with the agenda?
I I have a quick question, Leslie, just because as far as voting for this, is this something that would be public, meaning everybody would have to say who they're voting for? Or can it be, and and is it or should it be a confidential vote? Meaning that we have a confidential system for people to vote who for the 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 two members at large?
For the sake of people's feelings, it might be better if we did it confidentially.
Yeah. So I'm wondering if we couldn't do, I know we do, and I'm open to other ideas, but like for when we have to elect like the president of the medical council, we get these these polls that come out to us and we, it's like a one-time thing and we vote and then it says thank you and you get a little email saying thank you for voting. Is that that a possibility? That seems to me like it might be the best way to do it.
That's possible. And like if every patient advocate wants to be on it, we could put a name, put all the names in a hat and draw one out. I mean, that's that's, you know, a way to do it. The same thing with the healthcare providers, whoever wants to do it. If there's only one or maybe two, it's easy. But if everybody wants to do it and be on the committee, then it becomes hard. The other thing, too, is to remember that we will also need chairs for the legislative committee and the communication committee. So those are other options for people to to think about that. I know Colleen Brunetti is is very involved in legislation. She will probably want to be actively involved in that committee. I will also be actively involved in that committee, but since I'm one of the co-chairs, I will not. And that's one of the things that we should talk about. I think if you chair a committee, then you don't chair something else. You know, it's one chair.
Exactly. And we have that in the in the bylaws.
The leadership around, we're all, we're all adults here, and we all really want to be on this, and we all need to take leadership roles in certain parts. There'll also be ad hoc committees that'll be coming up that we're going to have to address, and those will be coming up soon. So tho- those are all things, but we'll get everybody involved in all of these committees and all the activities that our R DAC is planning on doing. So any other questions or shall we?
Leslie, I I prefer to have the open voting because I don't want to start this process with trying to figure out if someone voted this way or that way. We have to be like the House and and the Senate. Everyone's vote counts, but it's obvious. So I don't want to go into this. I don't think we should go into this in any way that keeps others outside of the process. You know, if if someone doesn't want to vote one way or the other, then that's up to them. But I'd rather have an open process, okay?
Okay.
So I I but I think this is different than it's voting for a person than an issue, right? So I I would say for, I I can't think of any form in which when we're voting for a person like that, it is open. I I I feel like I I do think that this is a small group that that can make hurt feelings. I I I think I would be in favor of either a closed voting, meaning that that no one needs to know who else is voting for who, or I'm perfectly happy withdrawing names out of a hat, too. Right? So especially if we have, we have really cute kids like we had today, they're really good hat hat name grabbers. So, you know, so what do you call, we can get someone else. I mean, you know, someone else who's there even just to grab them out of a hat. But I I think we should do one or the other. I think that is probably a a better way of doing it.
Michelle, I I really don't agree with that. You have to understand my position. And if we have been locked out of so many different processes, and I would much rather go into this in an open way than not be a part of it, okay?
This is, but what do you call, there's a lot, voting is freak is is frequently confidential because for 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 when you're voting for an individual person.
Michelle, I think we had an open vote, didn't we, when we selected the chairs of the committee?
I think there was just only, no one else really there's a limited number of people.
But but it was an open vote. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
It was approval. So we've kind of set the precedent with an open vote.
Based on the bylaws, it seems like enough help will be needed that almost everyone will be involved with this, I really think.
Agreed. That's what I was trying to say with needing chairs for committees. You know, there's, there's enough for all of us to do. I think a lot of work will even involve all the agencies as well. There's enough work for all of us to do and to be involved. So don't worry about not being involved. But, you know, if you want to be on the executive committee, put your name in. I don't know if anybody else does. You might be the only person who wants to be on it. Others may not choose to be on it, but if we end up with, you know, and what, if we end up like a tie vote or we if people get a little bit reluctant about voting in in public, then maybe we probably should consider going to drawing the name from a hat. But those are things we can discuss when we decide to get to the voting process. Any other comments? Any other ideas? I do have you recorded as wanting the open vote, Jim, so don't worry, that will be part of the record. And it's something that we can discuss when we start voting at our next meeting. So if everybody's okay, I'll start moving on to the next part of our agenda. Okay, we're moving on to legislative update. We've already talked a little bit about the rapid whole genome sequencing, Katie Beckett, that that law. And like I said, on July 11th, there will be a meeting at UConn. If you're interested in attending or want more information on it, please get in touch with me. I've been asked to be at that meeting in part because I was one of the motivating forces for having the rapid whole genome sequencing introduced in this last legislative session. It's a an issue that's near and dear to my heart because my daughter Kelly would have fallen under this group. So that will be happening at UConn. Anybody have anything else about that? Is there anybody who would like to be, we talked about the Katie Beckett waiver task force or task group, the work group that's going to be forming? Is there anybody else who would like to be on that group from our R DAC? Because one of the R DAC members will be invited to to be part of that. The work group is supposed to meet between June and December or July and December, so it'll be starting shortly. And the objective is to get together a recommendation paper on ways to either reduce or eliminate the Katie Beckett waiver. So that's something, and that will be legislation that we introduced in 2025. So that's something, if you want to become involved in legislative issues, it's something to think about.
Leslie, what time is the July 11th meeting? Because I'm part of a national meeting that day.
I will, I'll send you the time. I have an invitation to it.
Will it be taped?
Probably.
Okay.
Will be.
Yeah, I I have, before we move on to Kate Beckett, I actually have more, like, who's at this meeting on July 11th? And what's the purpose of the of the meeting?
It's going to be a meeting, I believe it's held by UConn to talk about rapid whole genome sequencing and to celebrate, I guess, the bill happening and and what this is going to be doing to help patients in the state.
So is this an official legislative activity or just something that UConn is doing independently as an institution?
Combination of UConn in conjunction with, I believe, maybe Alexion.
It's an Alexion, sorry, because I don't think Matt O'Donnell joined. It's my understanding it's an Alexion press conference, actually, that they're convening at UConn.
Okay. I could send you the information on it.
That would be amazing. Thank you so much.
Is there anybody else who would like it? Emily and, okay. Okay, moving on.
Do we, do we solve the Katie Beckett thing? Is there anybody else who wanted to be involved? Actually, my only question about that, Leslie, is do you still need patience for that? I have, I did, I do have families who said they would be, but you're also
You have families that would consider being on the waiver on the work group. Please either send them to me or to Representative Gilchrist.
Can I, can I put, give you, like, send an introductory email?
They'll be fine. Just send it to me and I'll forward them along to her. I think, I don't think they've filled the positions yet, but there are a few names that she has. So some of the families that I had talked to, two of them backed out because they were afraid they would lose their position. And I kept telling them that's not going to happen, but they still freak.
One of my families who wanted to do it, sadly, their child passed away in the last week.
Yeah, that's
I don't know if they're, they're still, I actually think they'll still want to do it, but my question is, would they still be eligible? Because they they were on the waitlist.
They, they're looking, I don't think so. I'll talk to Jillian about it. But I think she's looking for people who are on the waitlist right now.
That would be a powerful thing to talk about some, but they, you know, your, the family are dying, kids are dying while they're on the waitlist. They're not getting off.
Send me their name, and it's something I can talk to her about because it would probably be worth having her at least testify in front of this work group.
Yeah.
Or send a testimony to the work group because and that's something I've talked, it's, I'm also in the process, the other thing I'm trying to I'm in the process of talking to the Department of Developmental Services about a couple of issues. One of them has to do with their waivers. And their their definitions of developmental disability and intellectual disability and some of the ways they they do that. We have not been included in these discussions. They have expanded their definition of an intellectual and developmental disability beyond Prader-Willi, which for about good 40, almost 45 years, was the only rare disease recognized by DDS. They've now expanded it to 225 diseases, but Michelle, cor- correct me if I'm wrong, I think there's over 1,000.
I think there are even more than that.
I believe there are, but I, just talking about metabolic disorders alone.
Right, I mean
capable of causing these problems. And the problem for us is our children die before the age of five a lot of times, and families need help as soon as they can get it. But they don't do the intellectual testing according to DDS until they're seven.
So that's, that, yeah, some of that's, so youngest, we usually get anybody tested. I've I've been, I I've been going through this a lot recently in my clinic.
These are things that we need to discuss. There are things I will also bring up with Senator Anwar and Representative Krista McCarthy-Baker.
This is so important. I I fight this all the time. I'm sure Michelle does, too.
All of it, because one, it's it's hard to get kids. I mean, there's a couple of issues we've been finding, Emily, and I'll be, I'd be thrilled, I'd be really interested to see if you're hitting the same thing. Because one, it's almost impossible to get tested before four, but usually if there there's a limited number of places I can get at four. The biggest thing I'm seeing happening, this is new, and I I'd be really interested to see if you're hearing the same thing, is that I have kids that have the diagnosis, and then they, the schools, quote unquote, and, you know, they're in that, that, you know, 60 to 70 range, the high 50s, the 60s there, right? And all of a sudden, they get retested by the schools, and now they're 70.
Yeah.
It's like a Christmas miracle, right? And then they lose all their services. And and I just can't, I just, how do, I I'm just amazed all these children have had had this this kind of miracle change where they they've just kind of moved up. And so we're having a lot of problems with that. And then I'm going to go back to your first question is that just for intellectual disability panel, right? Just an intellectual disability panel is going to be over 1,000 genes. And that doesn't even include all the other stuff you're talking about with things which give you secondary intellectual disability, right? So
And that's, that's an issue that we have to bring up as soon as possible.
Genetic stuff, right? There's, there's other non-genetic causes of intellectual disability.
Well, the reason I'm mentioning it is, one of the problems is a law passed in 2022 that by 2024, there's a special counsel that needs to come up with a statutory definition of a law passed in 2022 that by 2024, there's a special counsel that needs to come up with um, a statutory definition of developmental and intellectual disabilities. And the two, the Disabilities Council and the Autism Council are part of the group that's doing this. We are not.
We, we need to be part of that group.
Yeah, we definitely need to be part of that group. And then also, it's a very arbitrary cutoff that changes. And also, intellectual disabilities tie in with developmental disabilities and behavioral impairments, and I, the, the families are failed. I mean.
Well, that's a discussion I've had. My daughter Kelly was on a DDS comprehensive waiver from very, very early on. By the time she was three, she was on it. She could not walk, talk, sit up, or do anything at that age. And there was no way they were going to be able to do an intellectual evaluation on her. They tried it numerous times. But it just wasn't happening. So it's the fact that she had all those problems. You know, I, early on, I worked with a nurse and a social worker from DDS, and they were tremendously helpful. And that comprehensive waiver was a godsend to our family for all those years. I don't know how we would have survived without it, and the nursing services increased as Kelly got more complex and older. So these are things that need to happen. And when I was talking to the uh, person in charge of the DDS waivers, I said, what happens to these kids ages three to seven? You know, and, and they can't do anything. What do the families do? Where do they get help? And so it goes, well, sometimes we give a temporary waiver. I'm like, that's not good enough. These families need to have some recourse, to go someplace to get help. And it's like, initially, all I got was twenty hours a week, but good God, that was a, a godsend. I actually got to sleep. You know, and, or go someplace with my son to a school function. And that's what we need to do for these families, because they're just going broke trying to hire people to help them. So that, that's something that I'm going to reach out to you two and probably Dr. Gell and, and anybody else who wants to get involved in it to talk about these waivers and see what we can do with the uh, Public Health Committee to see if we can get uh, on this, or, or at least have our two cents put in this statutory definition. Um, the other thing that I'm going to move on to now is talking about another issue that should be important to our community, and that is uh, prescription drug affordability boards. Um, this is legislation that was introduced this last session. Senate Bill Eight. And it's something that the Office of Health Strategy has been pushing for, for a number of years. It's uh, designed to help relieve state budgets um by being able to control prescription drug costs um, that are expenses for their, the state health plan for employees and for health plans such as Medicare or Medicaid um, in the state. And basically what these boards are, is they're an oversight committee. And um, they look at drugs and try to control spending on probably the most expensive of these drugs. And there are triggers, there's all sorts of formulations for doing this. In most states, the uh, Prescription Drug Advisory Board is a five-person advisory panel. They're um, and they're made up of mostly health policy, um, healthcare economics experts, and then there is usually one clinical metal, med- clinical medic, medical person. Um, but that person does not have to be a physician who is currently prescribing drugs. So the problem from our perspective that we have is that what we really need on these committees and what any patient who has a chronic or rare disease needs is we need to have a patient who's actually a member of the community who uses these drugs or needs these drugs to survive. And we need to have a physician who prescribes these, whether it's an oncologist, a hematologist, a geneticist, but somebody who's actively prescribing these drugs to be on these boards. Um, a lot of states, and in our state, the legislation would have had a consumer or stakeholder advisory board, but that's not good enough. We need to have a seat on these boards so that if we're the only ones objecting to the review of certain drugs, that's on record and people can look at it as to why our objections are. The reason I'm bringing all of this up, I mean, these boards basically do affordability reviews. They look um at a number of factors. They look at uh, the cost of the drug, the people who need it, access to the drug, is it affordable for patients? And then they will also use um AI or clinical algorithms um, to measure the, the, the drugs. And some of these algorithms that they're using are uh, things like Qualys, quality adjusted life years. And what these basically do is they measure um, how a drug impacts both the life expectancy and um, quality of somebody's life. But, and, and that sounds fine, and they do it mathematically, that sounds fine, but the problem is these calculations devalue the lives of those who are elderly. Um, those with disabilities and those with chronic and rare diseases. So in essence, they discriminate against us. So that's one of the problems that we have, and it's something we need to be aware of. Um, I'm bringing all of this up because there are currently eleven states that have some sort of um, advisory board for um, uh, prescription drugs. Um, most of them use uh, 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 Prescription Drug Affordability Board, and most of them are five to seven, usually seven members. Minnesota has seven members. And their advisory board, the reason they have seven is they have the traditional five health policy and healthcare economics people. But they have also added a rare disease patient who is somebody from the ARDEC in Minnesota. And I know her. And then um, they have also added a clinician who prescribes. So they have taken it that step further to incorporate that, which is good. Uh, Massachusetts and New York use um basically drug utilization review boards, and they have the ability to negotiate for uh, over uh, Medicare prescription drugs or Medicaid prescription drugs. And in Massachusetts, they have to use the reports, it's in their law, from the, a, a group called Iser, the Institute for Clinical and Economic Research. Um, Iser is not a friend to the rare disease community, and they're one of the groups that uses these quality adjusted life years in their calculations. And they have been accused constantly by the rare disease community of discriminating against us and the use of our drugs. They very rarely approve of a rare disease drug. So it's, that's one of the things. In New York, they're a little bit different. They don't use those uh, devices. And they have been uh, negotiating with drug manufacturers directly. The New York uh, Drug Utilization Board has saved the state so far over twenty-four million dollars through their negotiations. So there are some, you know, a- assets to this. Um, Ohio uses a drug transparency board, um, which hasn't been much. Maryland was the first state to institute this. But they really haven't done much because there were objections by the governor who refused to fund them. Funding for these boards varies from, you know, budget appropriations in uh, in law to collecting fees from manufacturers, PBM's, insurers, and others involved in this. So um, th- these boards in these states are permanent. Uh, this last year, thirteen other states looked at legislation for um, uh, a, a board, and um ours was one of them, as I'm mentioning, Senate Bill Eight. And some of the drawbacks with Senate Bill Eight for us were the composition under law of the board, not including patients and not including prescribing physicians. The uh, did not stop the use of Qualys in these drug utilization reviews. So we felt that that was discriminatory. And then the third portion was, there was no um language in the bill that would protect rare disease drugs from review. And the reason we bring that up is um, Washington, the state of Washington, in their drug affordability board, they have actually written into the law that if uh, the drug, they cannot review a drug that is um, recognized by the FDA and under federal law as being used exclusively for rare diseases. So that's the, at, at the moment, they're doing that because there's, we have very few drugs that we can have access to. Um, Colorado did not do that. And Colorado has been a very active board. This past year, they reviewed five expensive drugs like embrol, co-centrics. Um, and then they reviewed uh, trichefta, which is a drug that is used for cystic fibrosis. And the reason they determined to do that was because they determined that they had somewhere between four hundred and fifty and seven hundred patients in the state that were using it. And it was costing the state over a hundred and eight million dollars for these patients. Um, it was working out to about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per patient that the state was paying, and the out-of-pocket costs to these patients was over nine thousand dollars. So they decided to review it. Um, the backlash from the cystic fibrosis community, they had to mobilize to prevent this uh, was just outrageous. And what happened is the board, according to my friends in Colorado, ended up having to expend, suspend its activities for a while. Or the legislature determined whether they had to absolutely rewrite the law or develop an amendment that would protect rare disease drugs from review. And that's kind of where they stand right now. Um, in several other states, the bills are moving along slowly, but here, one of the reasons that it ended up uh, basically dying in the legislature was the fact on May eighth, the Health and Human Services Department uh, issued their final rule on anti, anti-discrimination rule on the use of AI and clinical algorithms um, in patient care determination decisions. And um, basically what they're saying is you, that uh, you cannot use tools that can potentially discriminate against patients. So that would rule out the use of Qualys is what we're thinking. And one of the questions that advocates asked legislators why they were reviewing this bill was whether um, the bill would allow the use of Qualys. And since they couldn't answer that, they kind of tabled it for the session, which it will be reintroduced again next session. So it's something that we're going to have to be aware of. If you want to learn more about it, I can send you information. I, I think I sent Michelle my outline. Unfortunately, my computer's not working in here, so I didn't have it directly in front of me. But it's an issue that we need to be aware of. Um, in one of our next meetings, I'm going to ask, I've asked the uh, uh, Partnership for Improving Patient Care to come and talk to us about health policies and the trends they see nationwide in health policies that can potentially discriminate against vulnerable populations. And we are considered a vulnerable population. So um, I hope that'll be okay. And then Colleen wants to uh, do um a uh, a presentation on Advocacy 101 to let you all know about how, what we do to get bills passed in the state. So we're going to start in these next few meetings that we have, preparing us all to be aware and be ready to start on legislation for the next session, things that we need. It's not just looking at waivers and those things. We need to be prepared to do input on uh, definitions of intellectual and def- and developmental disabilities. We need to be prepared to be involved in um, addressing prescription drug advisory board or affordability boards and what they do. I know these boards are technically being designed to try and help consumers. But they have the potential through some of the tools they use, such as upper payment limits that can actually end up hurting us because they can deny us access to drugs that we might need. And that was one of the fears in Colorado when they started reviewing. Upper payment limits are one of the tools that these affordability unit uh, affordability boards use. And what it does is it sets the maximum amount that a state pays for a particular drug. That may not be the price that the manufacturer wants to get, but that's the drug, the man- and what happens is they just basically say, we can either, you can either sell it to us at this price, or you can remove it from the drug market in our state. So it's, it's tough for our community since we have limited access to drugs. Um, any questions, any other comments? Craig, I imagine you have quite a bit to say about this.
No, like, I, I think you summarized it nicely, Leslie, because, you know, we've been following it. And my understanding with Senate Bill Eight was that it would get sort of withered on the vine a bit, but I, a question for me was whether or not this comes back in the next session, and how do we prepare for it? And is this something we have to work with? I think it's the Office of Health Strategy, or who else can we bring in to?
I, I think one of the things I would like to do is approach the Office of Health Strategy to have them come in and talk to us about this.
I think that'd be great to have them kind of come to a, to a, a discussion here. And, but I, I one hundred percent share your concern, Leslie, in terms of, you know, the people that we're here to advocate for in the rare disease community are likely to, to suffer the most from, from uh, an approach like this, where one can imagine it without, you know, making sure that the right people are part of that board of representing this community.
Yeah.
So I, I think it's a huge topic for us to take on. Yep. I think, oh, oh, yeah, the, the Office of Health Strategy would be a great um, starting point for us to have some of this, and then be very ready for the next session if this comes back around.
Yeah, I mean, the governor is pushing for, they're all looking for ways, and I, I understand it. The healthcare costs are just spiraling on a control. They eat up a huge portion of state revenue, and um, they're looking for ways to control it. But um, usually when I go in to testify in front of members of the CGA about drugs and rare disease drugs, um, I found I have to bring financial information. Um, the first time that SMA was uh, introduced, it was shot down because the drug price was at two point one million dollars, and everybody had sticker shock over that. The second year when I came in, I had data from uh, Boston Children's, Connecticut Children's, and Yale on how much the first three years for these children, because they were living at least three years, would cost. And just in hospitalization costs, and the costs ranged from two point one million to two point five million. It's much higher now. And I explained to them that our children, when they're in crisis, they don't just go into the regular floor in a hospital, they go into the ICU. And in our state, the cost of between five and twenty thousand dollars per day. So just think about if that child's in there for over a month. You know, uh, we've more than paid for this drug. So i- i- and when they realize that, when you can talk to them about costs that way, they get it. And we, we don't have a lot of options for rare disease patients.
Yep.
It's much cheaper sometimes to pay for the more expensive drug and keep them healthy and out at the hospital than their, than the uh, converse. So.
Absolutely. Yeah. So I think this is a key topic for us that we have to be.
Yeah, it's, we do. And this is something that if you all agree to have the Partnership for Improving Patient Care come in and address us um, health policy it makes us more aware of things that we should be looking out for and makes us more aware of things that we should be talking to legislators about. If they hear legislation's going to be introduced, at least get our opinion. We are here to help them, and we want to work with everybody. We're not totally opposed to doing these things, but we just want to have a voice in them. We want to help, you know, make sure that our population and other vulnerable populations in the state are protected.
Listen, I'm going to kind of go back onto that is I'm completely unclear why these councils are not made up entirely of prescribing physicians, right? So like, I'm all about trying to keep costs down. That, of course, is a balancing issue. I'm not on the research side, right? And I, I know there's a lot that goes into research and development of a of a drug. I mean, I guess I am. I mean, I do clinical trials and stuff, so I know how much my, I know my clinical trials run up more one site, right? But there, you're talking about people making decisions who have no clinical training whatsoever. So having a public health policy does not give you any clinical training. And really, to make it that, this to me seems like it's skating around, almost practicing medicine without a license, right? If you are deciding whether or not a drug is beneficial and should be paid for, for a patient. You know how that's going to impact the patient, what the alternative, what the natural history of the disease is.
I know.
Or a patient, you have no idea.
You're, you're hitting on a topic that a lot of us, when we deal with a lot of the health policy and healthcare economics people are focused on formulas. They don't necessarily have skin in the game that we're doing. They're trying to control healthcare costs mathematically to a large extent rather than focusing on patient care. And we're more focused on patient-centered care and improving the care of patients. So it, it's one of these battles that we've been having for years, and it's one of the discussions. So you're hitting it right on the head. I mean, this is a huge battle that's raging right now. And it's one of the things that we're going to have to get addressed. But for the sake of uh, the rest of the getting on to our rare disease survey and other issues, because we have ten minutes left. Um, if you don't mind, I'd like to table the rest of this discussion on, on this, and we'll bring it up at our next meeting.
Can I get a copy of H, uh, S, SB eight?
Uh, yeah, I'll send that.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want to talk about the uh, rare disease survey annual report, Michelle?
Yeah, I can, I can talk about this. So we need to put together two, two, two things. Let me start with the annual report, because that, that is kind of a mandatory thing. And remind me, Leslie, that's due soon, because it's due at our one-year anniversary, which is.
It's due December, but I think I'll talk to Senator Anwar to see if we can push that back a bit to maybe December.
Yeah, so we just need to do, uh, what do you call, there's no set format for this, for the annuals, uh, um, the annual report, but we need something that basically kind of, there's, there's a cut, we need to get some demographics on the group. And I, I knew that was, that's one thing that's coming up. And then a list of kind of what we, like a summary of what we've been do, we've done this year, and I think a summary of what we, what our hopes are for the following year. So um, I, I think the first question is, does anybody want to work on that um, with us? It doesn't have to be long. This is, we're not going to, you know, this is not our dissertation. with us? It doesn't have to be long. This is, we're not going to, you know, this is not our dissertation for our PhD. It's, it should be a couple pages that summarize stuff in a succinct but well-organized way. It, I think I'm a big believer in many hands make light work. So, you know, we could, if other people are interested and willing to do it, we could have people even just take like a part of it, or we could have someone start by drafting something very, very rough and outline it, and then having a, a group of people trying to turn that into a, a elegant and cohesive succinct document.
But this should probably be something that the executive committee will be addressing.
Yeah.
Will be the start. So we'll have at least four people there. I know Colleen is a writer, so we'll approach her about helping us. That's, she was tremendous on this. I don't know if Craig wants to.
Yeah, I'm happy to help with this. Absolutely. Yeah.
So I figured. So we'll, we'll get a few people and then anybody else who wants to help. So we'll, we'll, we'll flesh out a group to do this.
I know you said there's no like template, but any general examples that we have to start off of, like sections we want to make sure we cover?
Yeah, they were, they were nice enough to provide some templates. So I think that we could say, I guess what the first question is just who, who wants to work on this? And then we can, then we can just, I can send out the templates to the people who want to work on it. And then we can maybe sign up for, for pieces of what people want, want to do, who want, again, I'm, I'm, I'm a better proofreader, I think, than I am an initial writer, but I will do, but I'm, I'm certainly good at writing rough, rough drafts as well.
I'm happy to help.
Okay.
I think we got enough people now. So that's, we got four or five of us. If anybody else wants to just shoot an email, but I think we'll, we'll put that little group together and I'll start sending some stuff out.
Cool.
You know, I, I, I think that the, since this is the first year that sickle cell disease has been represented within the rare disease community, that there should be some updates relative to sickle cell disease and the progress that we've made. Okay?
Do you want to?
Yes, I do.
No, I'm, I'm going to ask you if you want to do a presentation on that, or if you can get one of the physicians to come and talk to us about it at one of our upcoming meetings.
Well, what happens is, you know, this is a kind of a bipolar place of state. And we have two treatment centers. And they have different approaches to all the above. So we have acted as the kind of non-political, apolitical gathering place. We have done Black History Month with the, with the, as you know, Leslie. We have done sickle cell disease in, in previous years. So I think that, I think that, and we have researchers in both places. And they're doing different medications and different therapeutics. I just think that I, I much rather, I much rather I be, our organization be more centrist as opposed to being polarized and Harvard Healthcare and UConn and then Yale.
No, I'm not, I'm not talking about that. I'm just talking about you have a new gene therapy that's coming out and it's going to be.
Yeah, there's no question about that. And we're doing that. And we've done that with Senator Anwar relative to CMS.
Okay, I don't think you've done it here or presented any of the information here is all I'm saying.
Oh, no, that's fine. You know, just tell us when we, give us some time. But you know, we are doing a report on the whole genetic gene therapy aspect relative to the patients and our clients and our, our providers.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, let me do my other two things. I'm going to do them rapid fire here because we're, we're four minutes at a time. We were, we have talked about now, we've had a lot of input. I think that we were waiting to get a lot of input from a lot of, we've had some amazing people come and speak. Patients, providers, you know, people, other people, stakeholders. It's, I, I think the goal now is to try to slowly start coalescing that into objectives. I was going to send out a small, a short, very open-ended four, four or five question survey on QualTrex to everybody to get them to put their ideas together so we can start using that. And, and ideas of what we should be focusing on to do that, if people think that's a good idea, or if they think there's another better way of, of starting to get everybody's ideas together and, and put something we can start to use as a rough draft to move forward. So I guess that was my question, whether or not feeling it's useful for me to send a survey of like, what do you think our most important topics are now after hearing this? What do you think the things are that are least important? What do you think the best approaches, things of that nature? If you guys think that would be helpful, I'm happy to send the questions around ahead of time so people could tweak them before they go out, or if you think there's a better approach. Or if you want to think about it and get back to me next meeting, that's also fine.
Yeah, I can't think of a better approach right now, Michelle, because I, I think it is important that we start to, we've heard, we've got a lot of substrate, a lot of ideas kind of coming across the the table from, that we've heard from people testifying. Plus, I'm sure there's, there's topics that we're all passionate about as well. Yeah, so it sort of makes sense if we get to start to collate it a bit, you know, and and then utilize that to, to then define where the, the top priorities. I can't think of a better way than maybe just sort of sending it, some sort of document where we just can all populate it or.
Would, would you rather do like a, like a Google Doc where we, everybody can just add on to it? Or a survey where we, where it's kind of everybody fills out the individual survey and then we throw up the raw data and decide how to, how to put that together?
I'd be fine with either one. Maybe it's, it's in some way, just like the open Google Doc where it's just, you know, where, and, and maybe it's just rack and stack it, just put everything there and then we start to pick the pick from that list about the, the one, the topics we feel we need to prioritize.
The one thing with your first idea, Michelle, if it's going to rank it by prioritization, that, that might be helpful. What people think is most important first. So I liked your first idea. If that's somehow, it's like a tally of how many people think this is important, this is important, this is important. Because we've hit so many important things, but we have to do it systematically.
Should again say, did you think Emily, a survey is better for that or, or like an open, an open document that people kind of add to?
Well, if we had the, all the different topics, you know, like you know, just coverage of insurance of like things we talked about, intellectual disability, whatever we pick and people rank. This, this is how I see the importance. And then you just sort of take all the ranks.
And we'll start with a survey and turn that survey into an open doc and then let the open doc.
Yeah, that's fine too.
Get it clearly a go. What do you think people think of that plan?
That sounds good.
I think that's good. Yeah, that's.
Michelle, who's the target audience for this report?
Yeah, I was gonna say, every, anybody in, in the state of Connecticut who has a rare disease, what we can do to help advocate for them.
It's going to the first, to the Public Health Committee and then like the governor's office and, you know, from there.
So it's not statewide relative to?
And be, it will be published, so it is statewide, I believe. But it goes initially to the chairs of the Public Health Committee.
Okay.
Okay. For the sake, we've got like a couple of minutes. Well, it's three o'clock. I'm going to ask the, the meeting five minutes, just so we can discuss our calendar. We have the summer months. We're scheduled to have meetings in July and August. And then the other issue are the meetings we have in November, December. They are during holiday weeks. So we need to figure out, do, do people want to take off July or August? Do you want to combine the two into a meeting, say the first week in August? And the same goes with December. What I would opt to do in December, November, December is to combine those two meetings into a single meeting the first week in December. Thoughts? Okay, you guys like, combine the meetings? Okay, so.
True for people for, so the first oh no, I can do, I'm going to be here the first, the first week of August.
July, it's comp, oh, July, we have Tuesday on the wait, it's the second, the ninth, the sixteenth, the twenty-third.
Do you want to keep the July twenty-third meeting or do you want to move that to August?
I'll be around, but I don't know if other people will be.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. Who, who is able to?
I can be around virtually. That, that was the question. I can be around virtually on July twenty-third.
Virtually, we can do July third.
Okay, so if we could. And would it be better to cancel the August meeting since that's during usually the school, back to school week? I think it's August twenty-fifth or something, and that's when everybody's getting ready for back to school. Should we start doing that?
That works for me. Is, is, are we having enough? How many people are going to be here? Maybe on July twenty-third? Is anybody not going to be here in July twenty-third? I'm going to be here.
Okay, I'm going to be.
I'll be here.
We're all, we're all here.
Okay.
So I think we probably have got a forum or a quorum for July twenty-third. So maybe keep that meeting. If that's okay.
Are you looking for December? Because yeah, you're right. It hits Thanksgiving week and then.
It's Thanksgiving week.
In the Christmas Eve. So yeah, that doesn't make any sense.
No, it doesn't. So that meeting, I would definitely recommend moving to probably the first week in December. Because that one's going to be crucial. That'll be our last prep meeting before we start getting ready for the twenty-twenty-five legislative session. December third. Does that work for everybody?
Yep.
December third would be hard for me because that's when we have our faculty, we have, the first Tuesday month, we have faculty meeting.
Okay, what about December tenth?
And I can make work with that, if that's okay with everybody else.
Yeah, that works.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, so we, okay. So let's take a vote on that then. Do I have a motion to merge the December, November, December meetings to a single meeting on December tenth?
Yep.
And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Michelle. Michelle. Sabra. Okay. Do we take a roll call vote or just? All right, I'm going to, I'll start a roll call vote. I vote yes.
Sort of vote yes.
Mary votes yes.
Durian votes yes. Michelle?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Jim? Jim Carson?
Yes, yes.
Adrian?
Yes.
Jim Rollings? He's not there. Okay. So I guess that, that carries, that motion carries. Now, what about we keep the July twenty-third meeting? Do people want to skip the August meeting or shall we keep it? I'm, I'll be around, so it doesn't matter to me. But I just want to know what other people think.
Maybe in Ju, I, I thought we keep it unless in July, people are saying, oh no, it won't work.
Yeah, I agree. I would, for now, keep it.
Keep both of them.
Yep.
Your second. Okay, that, that sounds fine to me because I think in these sessions, they're both going to be virtual. And what we need to start doing in these two sessions is probably start talking about legislative issues, where we are getting involved in the statutory definitions, things like that, trying to do prep work for the next session.
Yeah, and I think it'd be great, Leslie, if we could get the, the committees then enrolled, funded, you know, voted upon in the next two sessions.
I want to uh, one of the things I want to mention briefly is I have a meeting with one of the members at DPH to talk about the possibility of trying to fund our council through a nonprofit. So if anybody wants to join that discussion, I can send you the information on doing it. But I know that the lupus community, for instance, did that. So it's something that we could possibly do, and then we could get funding through a nonprofit directed, given to DPH, directed solely for the construction of like a website or some other function that we're going to be doing. I, yes, I have been chased by several of the groups in the state about funding us. So we do, we'll, we should be able to, to solicit funds to do that. But if anybody wants to join in that discussion, I would appreciate your help or your input. Is, I know we were supposed to discuss new business such as the calendar, a social media update, but if everybody doesn't mind, for the sake of time, I'd like to defer those to the next meeting. And at this point, I will entertain a motion to close.
Provide a motion to close.
Who's, Emily is.
I second.
So with that, I thank you all and look forward to seeing you next month. Take care.
Thanks, everybody.
We got through everything. Initially, I was like, we're not going to fill the whole time. Then I'm looking at the time, I was like, oh God, we're running over.